Okay, we're gonna call the order of the Kattati Planning Commission at 7:03 I think. About to. Can we get a roll call please?
Vice Chair Ford, Commissioner O'Nines.
Here.
Chair Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Whipple.
Here.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
So, can I get approval of the minutes for the Kattati Planning Commission regular meeting of August 6, 2018? Does anybody have any changes?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I had one clarification for you on page six of the packet where we've repeated the language that we changed for condition number four.
Mm-hmm.
The language actually says, "This permit shall expire upon the departure of the current applicant, Brandon Levine, from a, excuse me, Brandon Levine in the micro-business, from a controlling position, comma, should be change in tenancy or sale or transfer of the business." So, we'll make that correction to the minutes.
Okay.
And that's packet page?
Six.
Six. So, there are two spots in the lower third of that page where we've repeated the wording, so it's right, the easiest place to find it is the second bullet point at the bottom of the page.
All right, duly noted.
Should we move to approve those changes?
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call please?
Commissioner O'Nines.
Yes.
Chair Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Whipple.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
So, any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
And at this time we have oral and written communications. The public is asked to please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to items not already agendized for discussion. We see none. I'll close the, um, I'll close the public hearing and go to matters at hand. Election of the 2019 Chair and Vice Chair. So, um...
Ms. Sparkler? Yes, I think the way we've handled these in the recent past is just a discussion among the commissioners as to who's willing or would like to serve in the positions, and then the commissioners nominate through the chair, and typically we take separate actions on each position, so one vote for the chair and one vote for the vice chair. Obviously, the current chair is Commissioner Moore, and the vice chair right now is Commissioner Ford.
And Ben did send an email saying that he'd be willing to take chair.
He didn't. In fact, he sent an email saying he'd be prepared to nominate me if he had been here, but I'd like-
Oh, I'm, I'm, I guess I didn't read that.
No, he sent an email to me.
Oh, to you, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that was just on a personal level. I'm certainly prepared to put my name forward on the, um, the chair.
Okay.
I've been the chair before and been through the procedures, but I'm happy with whatever the board decides.
Is everybody okay with Neil taking chair? Okay, I nominate Neil Hancock for Chair of the Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner O'Nines.
Yes.
Chair Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Whipple.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
So, now we need Vice Chair Suzanne. Would you like to be Vice Chair?
I can entertain that idea if no one else wants to-
I think it's appropriate.
I do too. I think you're, we'll, we'll give you a year and then you-
Then I'm on. Okay.
I nominate Susan Whipple to be Vice Chair.
I second. Can we get a roll call on that?
Yes.
Chair Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Whipple.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to both of you. Neil, do you wanna trade now, or do you want me-
I suppose we should.
Okay.
Grab my, uh, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to matter at hands the second item, Grab South Brew Brewery Use Permit Amendment, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Kattati approving amendments to a use permit for brew pub Bar Tavern with live entertainment nightclub at 7950 Redwood Suites, Redwood Drive, Suites 15 and 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, JP sends his apologies. This was his work. He did the work here, but he has, he came down ill late last week and is not doing better yet, so he sends his apologies. One quick thing to orient the commission is that the conditions of approval which are attached to the staff report, that is beginning on packet page 13, those are shown in underlined strikeout so that you can easily pick out the changes, and then the conditions later in the packet that are attached to the resolution, those are the final version, so that's why they're in there twice. And then, I wanted to call your attention to one correction in the resolution on page, packet page 16, the fourth recital down. We were originally striving to make this item, to hold this item on December 3, and we weren't able to make that hearing date, but we will be changing that to January 7, today's date. So, that's just one correction. Onto the actual content of the request that's before you. As you will remember or know, the prior use permit was approved for this brew pub, and the, they've been operating successfully and have been a great addition to the community by all accounts. When the applicant came in the first time, they had an idea how the business would run. They've been up and operating for a few years now and have submitted this application to do two minor changes, and that would be to extend the operation, the operations from five days a week to seven days a week, to expand, to, excuse me, expand the hours from 11:00 a.m. to, uh, they're currently 11:00 to 9:00 p.m., so they wanna expand those from 11:00 to 11:00. And then, I guess a third change would be the way that we would monitor amplified music. So, they currently have an appro, excuse me, a condition, and we'll navigate to that, packet page 13, um, condition of approval number six, wherein this was, this use permit was approved before we did at least two others where we've struggled a little bit to figure out how to monitor noise levels that made it affordable to the applicants and also achieve the results that we're looking for, which is to be sensitive to surrounding land uses. So, when this use permit was approved, they had the requirement that before outdoor amplified music events were approved, except through a limited term permit, an event permit, that they would complete an acoustical study to show us, to model predicted noise levels. And so what we're proposing with this amendment is more in line with the more recent use permit approvals, where we've just said, when you have events or outdoor music, monitor it at the property line so that we know what the sound levels are at the property line. So, that's the bulk of that change, and the way that we arrived at that recommendation is detailed in your staff report, that basically the surrounding, closest surrounding land uses are office uses, and the code requirement for noise levels at the property line for office uses is 75 dBa, so that's what's recommended here as the maximum amount of noise at the property line. And noise levels are typically monitored at property lines regardless of uses next door because it's, say in this case where there are multiple tenants in one building, that's considered more property management issue than a land use code issue, so we're more concerned with how it's impacting surrounded property owners and users, whereas the, the property owner should be responsible for monitoring nuisances to fellow tenants. So, after thinking about it, we thought that if we're monitoring at the property line and we're monitoring for that most sensitive, closest land use, i.e. offices, that that would be a sufficient level for them to operate at and still protect in accordance with the land use code. JP has included this Figure 1, which I think is really helpful to sort of get an idea, that's on packet page 11, to get an idea of really what typically, typical ambient noise levels are in our environment. And the thing that we come back to with this location and, and why I think it is a good location for this use is that, that location next to the highway, next to Highway 101 and next to Highway 116, really when you're looking at traffic levels, they're at that noise level already. So, if Grab South had amplified music, it's not apt to create a bigger nuisance than is what are, what is already existing. That is really the bulk of the request. It was really a simple, straightforward request for amendments, and JP is at the ready with my cellphone, so if you have questions that, that I can't answer, I'm happy to talk to him about it. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question. Directed to staff, how, just 'cause I'm new to this field, how does an applicant monitor the decibel levels?
Yeah, there, a good question. There are a variety of noise monitors out there at varying levels of sophistication. Noise levels that are used for planning and zoning are weighted over a 24-hour period, meaning that if you might expect construction, for example, to be taking place in the daytime hours, so if that level, over an average 24 hours, silent at night or more quiet at night, the idea is that there's more noise with just ongoing business and activity during the day, so it's weighted on a 24-hour period. So, the biggest difference in noise monitors are the sophistication to which they can give you that weighted average. So, we did some preliminary pricing to see what those monitors might cost. They range sort of from $50 on up, so the applicant could easily invest in one that would give us at least a general indication of what the noise levels are, and then we could wait them, we could talk to noise acoustical analysts to wait those. The other thing that the city has in its budget that we're looking into right now is to purchase a noise monitor for ourselves for code compliance. It's a frequent issue with mixed use development and entertainment uses, so we thought it was a good investment for us to have. So, if we think the noise levels are approaching that based on the applicant's information back to us, within the next few months, we should have our own noise monitor that we could go verify.
So, any, any discussion?
Yeah.
I'll open it up for, has anybody from the public like to make any comment?
Good idea. You're welcome.
So, I'm, I'm the property owner, so if you have any questions for me, I'm available, but I wanted to support the applicant in this application.
Could you just say your name for the record?
Oh, my name's Craig Enyard, and I live in Hillsborough, and I own Gravity Steam Business Center at 7950 Redwood Drive. And I just wanna echo what the staff report said, which is if you could just visualize 101 off-ramp in the back, Highway 116 to the south, Redwood Drive in Lowes to the west, and industrial to the north. There's, you know, just really very little impact by having, you know, entertainment. Our, our last tenant, which is a dispensary which you sort of helped us with the last time you met, I think, August 6, it closed at 7. So, other than, you know, you know, any other hours they do for, you know, production or operations. So, I think the application makes sense in terms of, you know, increasing the number of business days, just 'cause that's what they'd like to do, and we think the use has been great for the center. They're kind of an anchor at the south, Spotlands at the north, and dispensary is pretty much everything in between, so there's really no impact to the current tendencies as well. So, I just wanted to thank you for all your support. Once again, we've gotten a lot of support recently in helping us, you know, expand and maintain a occupancy level, and we're obviously very happy with, you know, the way things are going, so appreciate your support tonight.
So, any other public comment? Anybody else want to? So, I'll close public comment then and bring it back for discussion with the-
I'll, I guess I'll start. I, I think it's a, I, I'm surprised that they didn't do it the first time when they came, 'cause I was actually suggesting that, 'cause I was like, you're, you're probably gonna wanna increase your hours. I think they're a good fit, and I think the idea of, of music in that area is, is nice. I think the parking is adequate out there if you wanted to have some kind of music, and I know we didn't really touch on that, but everything kinda closes down around 7 and there, and I just think it's a good fit. There's not that many neighbors to impact.
Steve?
I support this proposal, and I think it's quite impressive that the police have had no call-outs any time since they've been open. And I, I think that says a lot about their management and how they're conducting their business.
And I'd like to support business in Kattati and try to help it grow, so this is a great opportunity to grow this business, and I think we really need a lot of additional places that are open late to go, so I'm hoping that will, will be good for customers and for your business.
I'm in the same. I agree. I support the, the motion. It's a great location, as you actually said, where it actually is, both in terms of the location and other businesses actually around there. In, in full disclosure, I have been in and enjoyed some of the beers, so, you know, that's been very good. Nice location, nicely run. So, yes, I think it's great. So, can I have a motion to pass or just-
I'll make that motion. Although, do we need a resolution number?
We fill in the resolution number afterwards, but if your motion could include the correction to the date, that would be great.
Yeah, so, let me get to that page.
That's page 16.
Thank you. So, I move that the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Kattati approving amendments to a use permit for a brew pub Bar Tavern with live entertainment nightclub at 7950 Redwood Drive, Suites 15 and 16, with the amendments of changing the date from December 3, 2018, to January 7, 2019, and the fourth whereas.
I'll second.
Can I have a roll call please?
Commissioner O'Nines.
Yes.
Chair Hancock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Whipple.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Congratulations. Have fun with it. Or-
Maybe 12 hours.
Okay, moving on to reports by staff.
Yes, thank you very much. I wanted to, it's been a while since we met, so I wanted to run through some of the projects that I know you all are familiar with. The Kattati Station Multifamily Project, as well as the 100 volt per ISO project, the developer is in negotiations with builders on both of those projects, and we're finalizing sort of the, um, public improvement agreements and the affordable housing agreements and all those, which will go to council hopefully soon, but those are in the works. I know it's been quiet on both of them for quite a while, so there will be some future action, hopefully in the next 45 to 60 days on those, so that they both go under construction, maybe late spring, early summer. The hotel project, that one is, we've gotten through all of really the core issues around compatibility with a specific plan, or compliance with a specific plan. We're right now finalizing what the road should look like, the existing St. Joseph's Way and how it ends, how it terminates, and so that one I expect will go either to, through design review or to you for some preliminary look at, hopefully quickly, not, I don't have a date on it yet, but it's turning into a very nice project, and, and obviously we're excited about that one. JP is also working on the two projects that are on Highway 116, the ones that are on either side of Alder, meaning east and west of Alder at the corner. Those have gone through several review cycles, and there are still outstanding questions about the Highway 116 interface with engineering, but those should be also coming to a resolution in the next couple of months. We're going to be issuing the second request for proposals on cannabis uses to take up the remaining permit numbers, so we have, we have more allocations of permits than we had applications for. And then, one of those applicants, at least one of those applicants has decided not to go forward, so that one will go back in the pool. So, we'll be issuing that in the next, next month, I think, or less, and so those will be coming back to the council for evaluation also, probably springtime. And then, finally, Bike to Work Day is coming up on May 9. That's a Thursday, so we wanted to just find out people's, to gauge people's temperature for whether we wanted to have a booth this year. Again, seems like a good idea, so if you have any thoughts about that, I'd be happy to hear those. Last year, JP and I and Ashley from the Rec Department, together with David Dioma from the Mud Packs, I think that's the name of his, we staffed it, and we had, I wanna say, uh, it's old lady brain, but I think there were about 20, 22 people that stopped by, so seemed like a good location, and it was fun. So, if, if you all think it's a worthwhile thing to do, then, then we can certainly do it again this year. And if you have any thoughts about how to organize, or if you wanna help us staff it, that would be great. And I think with that, those are the big-ticket items. We have a series of amendments that we need to do to the ordinance, our land use code for housing-related issues, but we're still waiting through those. The state passed a number of housing bills, as you probably have heard, in 2017, so we're still working on what that, the impacts of that, those bills had, so you'll be getting a slew of housing-related things coming up. Just don't have a timeline for them yet.
The event coming at the end of the month, what is our role to be in it, and is there any way that we could prepare for it?
The special joint meeting for wayfinding, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, that is going to be the adoption hearing, so, uh, we'll be bringing the whole document forward, and you all should have received that document, or the, excuse me, the folks on the wayfind, on the steering committee have received that document, and then the whole bodies, each of the whole bodies will be receiving it shortly. We'll get it out ahead of the standard council packet, 'cause it's pretty large. But it'll be a different type of meeting because we wanted the consultant here, and it wasn't in the budget to have him come out three times, so that's why we're gonna have a special joint meeting, so there'll be some furniture rearranging for it. But basically, wanted everybody to be here, and there's gonna be one joint conversation with all the bodies, and we'll likely have to have three separate resolutions for it, so it's gonna be a little juggling of that, but generally, it'll be a discussion and then an action by each of the bodies to adopt.
Again, is there any preparation you can do?
Well, I think just reading through the document when it's distributed to you and making sure that, yeah, the, JP did a lot of work with a consultant on a field day for locations, so I think for the bodies, it would be making sure that you listen to the steering committee's thoughts about the design. We went through really five iterations of design, or five design options, and the locations where they're gonna be and sort of the hierarchy of signs, so it, it gets to be a lot more complicated than it seems at first to make sure that you've got a nested series of signs and all that, but it's well thought through, so I think just making sure that you agree with where the important locations are, that the design is something you can support, and we'll be coming to you with a sort of generalized prioritization, because we can't fund all of the signs at once, so we'll be coming with a prioritization of how we think they should be installed. So, those are probably the high points, the big takeaways.
I mean, just to add that I'm on that committee, and so we've seen these documents except for the prioritization, so I think you'll have some good stuff to, to read through and really just visualize where they're gonna be in Kattati.
Be digested, but-
It's very pictorial, very digestible.
Will have enough time to read it before-
Um, you know, it just depends on how much work you wanna do and going out and seeing the locations, but I think it is. I think it's in a very good state, very professionally done. So, any comments on-
I just wanted to comment about the Bike to Work Day. I think that's worthwhile doing, although, having said that, I can't be there. But, and I do wanna let staff know and my other commissioners know that I'm gonna be gone from May 2 through May 27. I won't be available.
Good for you.
Yeah, New Zealand, here I come.
Do you have any?
Um, no, I, so what, what date was that again for the Bike to Work Day?
Thursday, May 9.
May 9.
And the joint meeting?
The joint meeting is Tuesday, January 22, 2-2.
So, I support the bike meeting, or at least the Bike to Work Day. I mean, last year I actually dropped through, went through it, and there was a group this end, and actually when I got down the other end of McDowell, 'cause I took the train down on the bike, with my bike, and on the other end of McDowell, there was quite a, quite a group out there. There was a bunch of people who work in the local businesses at the South McDowell side that, I guess- there's a, I guess, corporate circle, so that was very, very active. And so there's a good group of people coming out, there were people coming out from, I guess, SSU, but it was raising the visibility. So if you, I'd be happy to volunteer if, last year, I guess there wasn't any need, the previous year I did, but if that works, that'd be fine, if there's a need there. And the question I had on housing, there's a, I guess, some lists that have been put together about, that we heard at the planning conference. So does Kattati fall into one of those lists of having to pay attention to housing? Because it sounded like that Sonoma County was in good shape.
I think you're probably referring to the compliance, if you're in or out of compliance.
Couldn't quite get the technical language, I think.
Well, there's lots of different things flying around, so it's hard to track it. Yeah, so far, we are okay. We're about halfway through the housing element cycle, and we've built about half of what we need. Funny enough, we've built more in the affordable range than we have market rate. So as soon as Valparaiso comes online, we'll be much better set, because that's a mix with actual moderate and market-level homes in it. So there are some serious ramifications, though, for not being in compliance, which is a little frustrating, because you can streamline, you can have sites, you can do everything you can do from the regulatory side, but you still can't force someone to build their projects. And if the projects, if you're not in compliance, the developer can force basically by right, so take most of the public hearing process away. So it's quite a change from where we've been in the past. The used to be, the monitoring for compliance would happen just at the end of your housing element cycle, so it used to be every four years, and then it went to every eight years. So that used to be where the monitoring would come in, and now it's annual, and they put you on what I like to call the shame list, so they put your status online, so anybody can go check.
We saw the shame list.
And there was surprises, I think, for San Jose had some surprises with some of their procedures. There was some technical issues.
Yeah, most of the, I think most, if not all of the Sonoma County jurisdictions have, are, you know, sort of so far so good, but it's, you know, going to be a year-to-year type of evaluation, so we'll see. Yeah, fingers crossed.
So thank you very much. Any reports by members of the council?
I went to the conference, obviously, and it was good. The three of us went, so it was good. There was, there was a lot of, like you said, we learned a little bit about housing, and they had a nice book giveaway this time, so that was kind of interesting to get a couple books about planning. I think it's always, always good to get that energy and to kind of see what's out there and see what other folks are doing.
I also thought that conference was really worthwhile, so thank you to the city for allowing us to go.
So I went there as well, and one of the things, one of the data points that came up for me was that Peter Parkinson, who was a former director of Sonoma PRMD, and talked about the wildfire recovery, and he'd been burnt out, but he mentioned a figure that that he's seeing as the rebuilding costs is over $400 a square foot. So $400 to $700 a square foot. And I know another friend who got burnt out, and he's got a very high price, he did a fixed price for his, he was in the bottom of Mark West Creek. So it's kind of a bit of a shock of that, but that's the sort of, you know, that probably impacts some of the housing sort of things that are going on as well.
That was kind of interesting, because we just evaluated the insurance on my mom's house, and I put that in there saying, one of the things was it's such a cost from our conference, and one of the things is those houses were completely burned down. So usually, normally, a house doesn't completely burn, you know, a section of it will burn, or a kitchen will burn, or something like that, so the cost aren't so much to rebuild a portion of a house as in the house which is completely burned down. So this is a little explanation that I got, because I brought up our conference, saying that I think we need to raise the insurance. It was just interesting, interesting to see that different perspective from an insurance agent.
And then the other person that spoke also was Kevin Fang, who is an assistant professor at SSU Department of Geography, and he just had some really interesting observations on traffic. So he's actually studying traffic and vehicle miles traveled, and particularly looking at the, some of the lift-type economy that's going on, and how would that impact the streets? And he was basically saying, a vehicle on the street is a vehicle on the street, no matter where it's going. So the only way you're really going to, what I took away from it, the only way you're really going to reduce the density of traffic on the streets is reduce the volume that people travel in, or which is buses, or which is something else, or bicycles. So that's just, you know, that was a sort of an interesting commentary on the study of where you could get some changes or where there might be a hope for changes. And I know a lot of the startup companies always try and promote something, having been on the inside of them, they always try and promote a story that everybody likes, but the, you know, the, just that side of the economy won't really change the traffic patterns too much. In fact, I mean, some places have said it puts more people on the streets looking for, looking for business and stuff. So it was very good, I thought it was excellent to go along and have a look at it. So any other issues or, we'll bring the Planning Commission, adjourn the Planning Commission at 7:40. Thank you very much.